First, questions to the applicant or for the planning board's starting proposal?
I will sit with you.
Is Ashley here somewhere on the planner? I've got some questions on the process, Ashley. Actually, let me start with Jim first, who knows a lot of this information where you're at. My first question is for the town solicitor. And I've received emails, pro cons, and the one thing individuals are stating that a developer is writing the ordinance for the town. And I'd like Jim to explain how that process works to amend an ordinance or amend the zoning.
You want to take that, Jim?
Sure. Mr. Patterson, sure. And I've heard the same comments about whether or not this is the town allowing someone to make amendments to an ordinance. And I will tell you that this is the first time in my 30-some years of doing municipal work that I've seen an applicant come forward with a plan rather than an in-house amendment that's generated by either the town council or the planning board. While it's unusual, in my experience, and I'm not saying it's unusual elsewhere, it may just be that I haven't seen it before, it is not at all illegal. As a matter of fact, the state enabling legislation in section 452451 talks about what happens when an application is received, when a proposal is received for adoption by an applicant. It doesn't say the town, doesn't say town council, doesn't say planning board, it says "an applicant." It talks about what the timeframe is for the town council to act, and then for the planning board to act, for it to come back to the town council, and then for the town council to give a decision on it. So I can understand why there would be the feeling that this is out of the ordinary or incorrect, because most people probably haven't seen it done this way. But it is an avenue that can be sought and applied for by an applicant. So hopefully that answers the question. There's nothing illegal about it at all. And the town council is a legislative body, so you are the ones that make a decision one way or the other, and that's what lies. So it's not, at this point, it's your decision. It's not any developer or any applicants or any objectors' decision. It's now the town council's decision. That's the way the state law says you can do it.
Okay. Now I have a couple of questions for Ashley. Ashley, this proposed zoning amendment, some of the argument we're hearing is no one will be notified when these projects come before you. Is that correct?
The application is to remove the special use permit process, so the notification under the special use permit before the zoning board would not happen.
Okay. And when you read the proposed amendment, it refers to, I mean, I've got a lot of paperwork It refers to the general requirements on this proposed solar amendment. The very first one was a major land development. Each utility scale installation application must be reviewed by the Exeter Planning Board in accordance with section 6.5 of the Exeter Land Development Subdivision Regulations. And when you cross-reference 6.5 and go over, item B, major plan reviews shall consist of four stages of review listed below. Also required are a public informational meeting and a public hearing. And the first item is a pre-act meeting. That's pretty much when someone comes in with like a print and an idea, and sees where you want them to go. Is that how that works?
Correct.
And number two is master plan, including a site visit. Number three is preliminary, and number four is final plan. And when you go over, let me follow the numbers here. 6.5.1 master plan review procedure, it goes through your submission requirements. And when you get to C, the site visit, you have the informational meeting. A public informational meeting shall be held prior to the planning board decision on the master plan unless the master plan and preliminary plan approvals are being combined, in which case the public informational meeting shall be optional based upon planning board determination that all necessary requirements for all stages so combined have been met by the applicant. And then under the next paragraphs, an informational meeting. Number one, public notice for the informational meeting is required and shall be given at least seven days prior to the date of the meeting in a newspaper of general circulation within the town. Written notice shall be mailed by the applicant to all property owners within 1,000 feet of the property proposed for development. Certificates of mailing must be presented by the applicant to the administrative officer prior to the commencement of the public meeting. Number two, the applicant shall also provide an onsite sign or sign notifying the public of the application pending before the planning board as specified in section 6.5.3.6. At the public informational meeting, the applicant shall present the proposed development project. The planning board shall allow oral and written comments from the general public. All public comments shall be made part of the public record of the project application. The costs of all informational meetings required by these regulations, including but not limited to the legal advertising, mailing signage, and stenographer shall be borne by the applicant. So when they go under the zoning regs, it's within 200 foot of the property line if I remember correctly?
Correct.
When they're notifying? So, because this is one of the arguments we're hearing on both emails and that, is no one's going to be notified, they're just going to build them. So this protection's in there. All butters will be notified.
There's a distinct difference between the planning board process and the special use permit process. The zoning board looks at different standards, and they can make different assessments, and they can base their decisions on different criteria than the planning board can. When you have a special use permit as part of the process, it's typically done for a project or a site plan of something, I don't want to say questionable, but of a larger magnitude, of a greater impact, of something that you want dual review of. So yes, the public will be notified, but the standards for decision-making are different between the planning board and the zoning board. The conditions they can impose are different between the planning board and the zoning board. The planning board is standardly, through major land development projects, looking at things like landscaping and screening. The zoning board gets to look at things like impacts on neighbors, property values, other things that the planning board doesn't necessarily have purview over. So it's not a duplication of effort. It's two different processes with two different standards, but yes, they would be notified as part of the planning board process.
And a lot more people would be notified then, under the zoning.
The radius is larger, yes.
Okay. One question I have, and when you go down Route 2, because the case is coming up, residential versus solar. Exeter has very limited commercial and industrial land, correct?
Yes.
And one parcel down the road from me was approved for an office park, and we all know how the economy is in this state. He had to get his zone changed to change that into the housing unit that he's putting in there.
No.
What was the zoning on that lot?
It's zoned business.
But he was able to put residential?
He filed for a comprehensive permit.
Yeah. He's going under the affordable housing.
Correct.
And that's also the case down at Oak Harbor? Where that apartment building, that's approved?
That, it's not fully approved, no, but it's been through the planning process.
So that's what, 50, is it 52 units?
I'd have to look at the plans. That hasn't taken place since I've been here, so I haven't been part of those hearings because it reached a certain point and it stopped.
Because I know one of the office parks is 32 units, and I was, the last I heard, the proposed apartment complex is 52.
I'd have to verify the number.
Because this is one of, that's another argument, residential versus solar.
Eight units of five, it's like 40.
Okay.
Very limited commercial. When you look at our comp plan, Route 2 and Route 3, that's it for commercial. And I believe just about all our industrial land is on Route 3, because last I looked at it was only 11 lots on industrial. You don't know that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know that. Location-wise, yes. I haven't counted the number of lots.
Okay. I've got a lot more questions later, that's it for right now. I've got questions for the applicant. I don't know if they're here somewhere. Let me find the right stack.
Good evening, Mr. Congressman. My name is Nicholas Goodyear. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Pick that up a little so the audience can hear.
I'm here tonight in, Attorney Manti is absent.
Can you just state the name of the record for the question?
Nicholas Goodyear. G-O-O-D-I-E-R. We have members from Agreed Development here to respond to any questions that the council may have.
The one question I have, when this was first proposed, I've got the list here. I believe it was 129 lots, 128?
Right. Initially, there was a review done, and there were a large amount of lots. And based on some feedback that was received from the town, it was reduced based on criteria that was analyzed.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, the original list, and then when they were giving a presentation, they were peeling back wet man constriction, design, infrastructure, there was all sorts of it, and it peeled it down. And why was it scaled down to, I believe it's 15 lots right now, this amendment in front of us?
Right. There were a series of criteria that were applied to the over 100 lots that reduced it down to 15 lots. And essentially, without getting into every criteria that were applied, it was what is developable for this particular use. We can go into some of those criteria, but largely, most importantly, is distance from the substation, Lafayette substation, and then area was applied. So there was a, developable criteria was analyzed. Obviously, that was feedback from the town.
I want to just clarify that, because that was at this meeting with the council. We were sent back to the planning board and was asked to refine the plan to less lots. So we read from the planning board that the way they were reading the overlay is, it was the whole town. So at this meeting that we were here, the council sent us back to planning, because we wanted to define the amount of lots. And when we went back, the intent was for the interconnection. So it was six miles off of the Lafayette substation. It went from Route 102 to Exeter Road for the interconnection, and so many feet off of the major highway for the interconnection. And when you looked at that and you took out the open space and wet man, it's a different thing, to reduce it down to 15 lots.
And one of the major things with these projects is the infrastructure that's in place for what you have to do. Because, based, I know, I live on Route 2. Route 2 is pretty much maxed out from what I've learned, unless there was an upgrade to upgrade that entire infrastructure, is that correct?
Correct.
And this one here, this started back in, we're October, November, and in another stack here, there was a whole package from National Grid of what you had to build to make this possible.
It's, there was an upgrade. The package was submitted as part of the presentation. It was an upgrade. It's two 32 KV circuits that were going to put underground with concrete vaults coming out of the substation in North Kingston, running up 102 and branching down Route 2.
And I remember reading it last week when we were taking testimony. You're proposing 65 megawatts total? And, I'm going to find it in a minute. And I'm not an electrical engineer, I'll tell you that, so. But it was 67.5 megawatts? That's the capacity of the proposed line that you're going to put in?
Correct.
So, anybody else, if you're only looking at how many lots that your proposal is?
We currently, we really don't have, look at individual lots, but we currently have three that are in the town. It would probably be four to five lots would be for the 65 megawatts.
And once you reach the capacity on this trunk line, if any other proposals come before this town, that trunk line would have to be upgraded again?
Correct. The study that you're looking at is a national grid. The cost is only national grid's cost, it's not for all the infrastructure work that Green does. I think, I haven't looked at it for a while, but it was about 18 million. So with that 65 megawatts, those two 32 KV circuits and the transformers at the substation are maxed for that project, what we're building. If somebody else were to come in, they would have to do the same type of construction.
Would they be able to just pull lines out of that when you build and put bigger in, or they would have to extend?
The intent for the incentive for the town, because of the interconnection, right now, currently, there's 750 kilowatts that the existing circuit has, and that's the capacity in that area on 102. So with this, with the incentive, you need to hit the 67 megawatts to have the permit to afford to pay for the interconnection. So one job, 10-megawatt job could not afford the interconnection cost.
One of the other things that we're hearing back and forth was, you stated on record that the state mandate should give the host town $5,000 per megawatt, and you were going to offer another two to make it 7,000. And do you know the state law? Because I've had phone calls about this. They want to know the general law, the requirement for this.
The state passed legislation, we have copies of it for you if you want. We have a copy of the state legislation, and then, oh, we are sent out a brochure for what each town has to do. That limits the, what was happening in every town you went in, the assessors were assessing projects differently. And with the programs in the state, you couldn't put a bid into the state not knowing what the taxes were going to be. And it was, prior to this legislation, was tax exempt. So any tangible project was tax exempt. So it's $5,000 a megawatt. If it was wind, it would be $5,000 a megawatt for wind. For solar, it's $5,000 a megawatt, is mandated by the state. Anything over it would be from the development.
Okay. Yeah, if you can give us copies, because like I said, we've had that question from a couple of years.
This is the state's. It's like the statute on the first edition.
Got any more, just the one?
She's pulling them out right now, boy.
I figure the whole council should have a copy.
I do have five copies.
You've got five copies.
Pull them out, yeah.
I think that's it for now for you. I want to, I want to address one concern. We did receive one email from a lady, and I looked for it in the town hall Friday. I found it in my pile of papers over the weekend. It was from an individual on Trips Corner Road that wrote an email basically telling her concerns. She didn't want to look out the window of her house and see a solar farm. So I do have a copy of the print here. I believe the planning board probably has this copy, the town planner would have this upstairs. And where it's proposed at on the, this is on the Whitford land off of Trips Corner Road and Route 102. And I don't know how far along they are in the planning process. I'll have to ask Ashley this question later. It's showing a five-lot subdivision on the road fronting lots of Trips Corner Road. And where the proposed solar facility starts, the lot line is at 500 foot from Trips Corner Road. And then there's, one quick question, Ashley, 80-foot setback or 100-foot setback in a residential area like that?
Or the side setback?
Well, it's behind the lots proposed on Trips Corner Road, so that would be 80-foot?
Front setback, I believe, is 100. It's verified.
I believe the joint that you're looking at is 100 feet from the house.
100 feet?
So the houses that, there was a minute, there was a subdivision, they subdivided a series of houses on Trips Corner Road, and then we have a 100-foot buffer behind those existing houses. And we have been working with the developer on that to make sure that the buffer's properly there.
Okay. I think I'm good for that, that part. I might come back to you. I've got some other stuff.
Well, yeah, if I could, if I could just follow up on that tax issue, because I know that was a concern, and the town determining how it was to assess solar arrays, and I think you just spoke about the legislation that I think you handed to us that dictates the manner in which those solar arrays are taxed, and you're basing your estimate of what the town will receive from your project based on that state statute?
No, so.
How to tax?
To be very clear, we, the state mandates $5,000. Because of the development of the project, we have given the town, we have offered the town a 40% increase of what the state. So we will enter into a tax treaty with the town for $7,000 per megawatt. The proposal was given to the council, because the one project, if we were in another town, we're mandated to do five. We did an incentive for the town and went 40% higher than what the state is, and it's been in our proposal that you're going to get 7,000 per megawatt. So our calculations in our presentation that we've been giving you show $7,000 times the 67 megawatts. And that gives that number every year for 20 years.
So that appears in, in the submissions you've already made on proposals like this one?
I think what Calvin asks is, how is that contract memorialized? So, right now, it's just saying, we'll pay you, but there's nothing, you could say one year in, hey, I'm going bankrupt, not going to pay anymore.
Because we have to go through a process, so somewhere between now and the final process with the planning board, we have to, for approval, have to sign a tax treaty with the town. So what we are proposing is to sign a tax treaty for the 67 megawatts with the town at $7,000. So 5,000 would go into your general fund, the other 2,000 you can use for whatever the town, they could put in the general fund, they can use it for upgrades. We would sign a tax treaty with that. We would go through the planning process with the planner, planning department, have our public meetings, and prior to a building permit, we would then enter into a tax, that same tax treaty would be memorialized and broken up with each project. So what you would have is you had the Whitford project that they're talking on Trips Corner Road, and that was 10 megawatts, then you would get $70,000 a year for that project. And then if you had another project down the street on another site, so we would enter in prior to the final approval at planning and building permit, we would enter into a tax treaty with the town, which allows us to get to the last step. And we have drafts that's been used in Johnston, North Smithfield, and other towns, tax treaties, so we would negotiate with the solicitor to something to bring forward to the council.
So as a follow-up, you also mentioned that you would be hiring 300 Exeter residents at one point, and you also mentioned a scholarship fund. Where would that fall?
So the scholarship fund is a fund that the council could decide whatever, but that's $5,000. So in our proposal, we said we're going to give you $5,000 for every megawatt that we develop. So if I developed 100 megawatts, it would be $500,000. That's paid prior to a building permit, too.
Wait, no, you had said that, but also you had mentioned specifically a separate scholarship.
So we, what we, no, we offered, no, that's 5,000, so this, it might be a little confusing. All right. So first, you have the tax treaty for the state of Rhode Island, that's 5,000 a megawatt, that's mandated, that's all you can charge me. And that's every town across the state of Rhode Island. Then the second is, is our incentive that we're giving you is an additional two on top of the five. So now you're at $7,000 per megawatt every year for the life of the tax treaty. So we negotiate the tax treaty, that's that. The third payment that you're getting is a one-time payment for a scholarship fund that is $5,000 for every megawatt we develop in your town. So no matter where we go, and we do this in Johnston, we did it in North Smithfield multiple times, that is to use for the council. Some people use it for a scholarship fund, other people use it for buying a bus to the senior center, or whatever they really need to, or rebuilding a ball field. So that is just on top of it, and that's bringing all the incentives together to build the 67 megawatts in one capacity, so you can afford to pay for the interconnection on the project.
But I'd just like to follow up again, Calvin, that was my point memorialized. Is this proposal part of your submission to the planning board? That it becomes a part of that process? And the reason I say that is because, let me just say that I had, I happened to have a conversation with a family member from one of these 15 properties that is already, I believe, I call it plotted out, that's not the right word. It's already laid out. And I, and the person said, I was everything in town. My answer was, well, I think you understand, we do have an issue, and it concerns the proposal that we're discussing here tonight. And I said, one of the concerns that I've heard expressed is that we don't have the proposal for that incentive that you speak of. It hasn't been proposed, at least I haven't seen a copy. If other members of the council here have those copies, I haven't seen it. And that person said to me, well, you certainly shouldn't proceed with this until you have all of that laid out. So you see my hesitation and my need for clarification?
So I'd like to answer one question, you have a very long-winded question, so let me answer your first question.
I understand, I can be long-winded, but I have genuine concerns.
So the first question is, it's an economic benefit for the town?
Is that what he just said to you?
He's right.
I always want to answer each question before I lose track of it. So the first one is, is you said, should the planning board get the economic funds? No. The economics for the town?
That was not my question.
Well, you asked, should the proposal been sent to the planning board? Now, the planning board has seen the proposal, they've seen it here the first time, they've seen it in every one of our presentations, it's been there. So the proposal to the town has been out there, and every resident in Exeter knows about the proposal for the town. That's question one. Question two, no, not with that, it was with the proposal that was given, Calvin, and if you look in your folder, I'm sure it's there. Second part of this, this is an economic benefit for the town. It's not the planning board's decision, it's not the zoning board's decision, it's the council's decision if they want to make economic growth for the town. So that decision about money would go to the council, it would not go to the planning board. And because it's the council's determination, do they want to weigh development, or do they want to weigh development homes, commercial, or do they want to support solar? So that's why that decision is made, and that tax treaty can only be made with the council on it, because you are the governor of the town.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Can I just, for the record, the planning board has absolutely no authority to impose a tax treaty as a condition of final approval. So the implication that somehow the planning board won't approve the final plan until a tax treaty is approved, we don't have that authority. It's not part of our regulations, it's not part of our purview, and we could never impose that as a condition of approval on any of these projects. I just want that to be clear to everyone.
Now, would that money, so say we wrote this down this evening, and then we go with, for the planning board's proposal, would that money still be on the table?
No. No, it would be.
Who's going to approve your specific proposal?
No, the $5,000 is always on the table. You need to build the total project to afford the interconnection. So the 5,000, so if we build my 750 kilowatts on Trips Corner Road, I mean, on Tenrod Road, the REH property there, is 750 kilowatts, that, you would get your $5,000 a year. But there would be no more development up there unless you build a larger project for the interconnection, because you can't afford to build the project. So that's what the incentive is, is to build the project, to build the 67 megawatts as a whole on individual sites, so we can afford to pay for the interconnection. So no matter what, per state law, you get 5,000.
Right.
So if they go to special use, you can't move forward with any of those projects until you get the whole 67 projects. So you have the, let's say, five applications, five approvals, so you can't move forward with the project with the cash of X to the town. And the other thing is, it's not my place to put in the ordinance, I'm not allowed to come in, I'm allowed to make a presentation, but it's the council, if they want to amend or add, or have a meeting to sign a tax treaty, you wouldn't put, I wouldn't write- would have write that into the, into the ordinance. There's been other towns, that there's been amendments to the ordinance that put the, the incentive program in.
Some people had, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, Ken.
I don't know if we can discuss this here, I know there was some concerns, last public hearing we had, and tonight I had spoken with somebody, there was some bad stuff about, I don't know if we can discuss that, Jim, here tonight?
Regarding the hearsay?
We've got a communication for August number three, from a gentleman.
If it's from August, you can't do it because of the agenda.
Okay. You know, some, some folks that would just question your credibility, sir, that's all. And I don't know if you want to speak to that at all. I know there's a lot of concerns by public, you know, and things are happening, so.
Mr. Morse, if I, if I recall, hate to jump in, but a gentleman started that type of discussion, as I recall, I stopped him, basically because he was, he was presenting hearsay that couldn't be defended. You couldn't cross-examine the people that he was trying to, to insert into the discussion, so that's my recollection of it, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Rhode Island's a small state. We have done the same tax treaty with two other towns, and are already in the process, and you don't come in front of a board and offer them a tax treaty and build a project unless you're ready to pay for it.
This question was already asked by President McGovern, so I'll just reiterate this question. One of the planning board's concerns was, and I quote, "How are we ensuring that the jobs really are being filled by Exeter residents as we have been told?" Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So, so what we said was, is that we were going, we're going to be hiring a lot of people to work. There might be some people in the summer, there might be farmers in the winter, depending on it. The construction on this project, there are a lot of people that will be working on it, more than three hundred. So there's a lot of labor and job, there's a lot of concrete product, people carrying pipe. So we're going to work with the Job Corps, we're going to put out the job fair for anybody in Exeter. So we're going to hire people in the town, plus we're working with the veterans, boots down, that we work with them, and we bring them on board, too, and we'll probably work with Job Corps to hire people. So we'll hire, depending on the seasonal people on the projects while we're doing it. Then maintenance for the project after will be, maintenance for the project will have, so if a subcontractor gives us a quote for cutting the grass or maintaining underneath the solar array, it would be the end of the year, we would give them preferential treatment on that. And that could be written into, into the tax treaty, it could be solidified with the town, but we are going to open it up to any Exeter person that is qualified to make an OSHA, have an OSHA ten course, which we'll give them, will be allowed to work on the site. If there's electrician, electrical contractor that's in Exeter, and we're bidding, when there's a bunch of electrical, we would put that portion out to bid, we might take him and have him work on one site. So those are the types of things that we do to help, and, and we did the same in Coventry, we had a concrete company working in Coventry, they did the zuck bank for eight miles, we had, let's see, a paving company that did all the paving of the town roads over, so we use people out of the area just to help.
We have no way to verify that, though. Because we wouldn't ever know, like, we're not going to sit down on your hiring process when you have three Exeter residents and a, I don't know, Coventry resident. We're not going to be able to say, well, why didn't you pick the three Exeter guys? So how would we, even if we did write that into the tax treaty, how would we have a way to prove, verify?
That's something that we're offering the town to, to their job.
Right, but it was one of the benefits in your proposal, so I think people heard that, oh, they're going to hire local guys. Well, it's, we might hire local people, I think it's a better way, and you should have said that.
Well, we, we've always said in our proposals, we are looking, we will be hiring people for all these projects, and, and we'll be hiring, and if you want to be part of the job fair and seeing that it's happening, we can work that. We're not going to sit here and tell you that we're going to hire Exeter residents and not give them a job. If somebody does not have an OSHA tenor, is not physically capable of doing the job, then we would not. But we would offer that job out there, and I'm sure we would have a job fair to hire people, and we can keep the council.
So like I said, we wouldn't have any way to verify you did hire, you gave a preference achievement to Exeter versus somebody else, is what my point was.
Ken, listen. Any further discussion from the council? Questions for the developer, for the planner?
There has been some concern about the construction and makeup of the panels, and whether or not they carry any carcinogens or any poisonous materials that would possibly, you know, have an impact on the environmental, on the soils where they're laid. Can you give us some?
I'll let Al give you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Al Buckdum, CEO of Green Development. So I've been in alternative energy for twenty years, solar for ten. All of the panels we buy, we get detailed material specs from them, but the fundamental composition of a solar panel is silicon. Silicon is sand, it makes up like seventy-five percent of the earth's crust. There is no toxic runoff. It's a, it's a fear thing that people come out and say, oh, it's going to, you know, toxify our groundwater. There is no toxic runoff from solar panels of this time. Type to, you know, fifty years ago, before they improved the design, there may have been, there's been types of, you know, different panels that have introduced, but the silicon-based panels that we buy from the world's largest manufacturers are very well-vetted, have been in the market for many years, gigawatts of production, and there's no issue with any kind of toxic runoff or other concerns of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask another question, Mr. President?
Go with yours.
At the last public hearing, there was a resident that gave us a very detailed report with regards to concerns that they had. Included in that report was an article from a publication, The Wesley Sun, about a project that was built in Richmond, and the problems that the landowner and butters suffered when the project was put in. And there was complaints about it was not properly installed, there was flooding, there was runoff, there was all types of issues. So I've been contacted by many residents with that concern, especially butters of property owners where solar may be developed on. I do know for a fact that there was a follow-up article that did not happen to be included in this resident's report that he gave to us, and maybe he saw it, maybe he didn't, I don't know. But I would like you to explain, you know, exactly what happened with that project, why there was the problem there was, and what the mitigation was that was taking care of the problem. So that way, we can't expect that to happen in Exeter if we decide to support this proposal.
So I'm going to give you this very short, but I'll let our engineer, Kevin Moran, tell you exactly what the mitigation. The project was under construction, and as we recall, in November the seventh, we had a deep November, December, we had that deep freeze, the site work was not completed. Then we went into a heavy, heavy rainstorm, which we had several inches of rain in a very short period of time, which caused the washout. We responded that same day, prior to the town or anybody coming out there. But I'll let Kevin, let walk you through the steps that happened, right through the whole process to give you an idea what happened. And if you look at the site today, it's stabilized, there's a pollinating-friendly grass growing under the fields, and everything's been rectified for almost four or five months now. In the spring, everything was seeded.
Okay.
Yeah, Kevin Moran, registered professional civil engineer. At the time, I was working with the creed engineering last year when that project was designed. I'm now with Green Development as of earlier this year, so kind of been seeing both sides of it. Yeah, I think from when, you know, the article first hit in February, we were, we had met with the town immediately after, I think, the event. We had correspondence back and forth with DEM, there's been, that's ongoing. I talked to Eric Beck as recently as last Friday. He's the head of the RITD's program at DEM, but basically, with conditions allowed in April, we remobilized, completed the work that was started last year, in terms of grading, final grading, stabilization, getting grass planted, went, you know, even a little above and beyond what the plans called for in terms of a sort of final construction effort. We met on site with Eric Beck from Rideham, and town planner, and building official in Richmond, did a site walk back in May. I think the consensus was, they were very happy to see the progress that had been made in terms of getting the final construction in place. We're actually doing a follow-up with, with Rideham this week, in terms of ads, build photos, you know, things like that. It's a project that's mostly stabilized, is, you know, some areas it's a little slow growing with the hot weather, but we'll be monitoring that, we'll be managing the asset, you know, from here forward. So, you know, any, any additional reseeding, you know, later this year, we would have to take care of that. Overall, it's, it's in good shape. I think if you talk to Eric Beck, he'd give a similar summary as far as where we are today. And like I said, I spoke with him as early as last Friday afternoon, so.
Were the property butters satisfied with the mitigation, or?
Yeah, it was really one, one of butters, Mr. Jurzick, we met with. The only thing left is, is maybe some additional plantings we agreed to along a portion of his border. So I've spoken to Mr. Jurzick a couple weeks ago, had some follow-up to deal with him, so.
Okay, thank you.
One thing to note, that the day, if you recall the day that it was there, it was heavy, heavy winds, there was erosion control in, there was a lot of limbs that fell that damaged the erosion control. The neighbor's property was taken care of immediately when the rains stopped, we were already on site. We put, did some corrections on the driveway, we put stone in their driveway, we cleaned up their yard, there were guys cleaning up everything, the road was cleaned up. I would say, within probably six, eight hours after the rains stopped, everything was back to normal and new erosion control went up. And if it wasn't a solar array, these types of inconstruction, and I've been doing it for many years, civil construction, and site construction, on very, very large projects than this, you do have these events. Sometimes the objective is, is to avoid them, make sure you're following your plans properly, but if you have a condition where the ground is frozen solid, and the site work is not completed, and you have a storm that takes out erosion control, you just need to be there to address it immediately after. And it's, you know, it's part of our RITD's permit to address it, and we address it with DEM immediately and the town.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Ken?
I got some questions for Ashley. Towards the end of the last meeting, Andrew Teetz, he's given us this flyer for some seminars, informational hearings, from Rhode Island Division of Planning and the State of Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources. And who are the shareholders in that group? Office of Energy Resources. There's, you guys have been working on some state legislation, citing?
So there was state legislation to require municipalities to adopt renewable energy ordinances, that did not pass. Part of that legislation would have been to create an advisory committee, and the legis, the draft legislation identified who the advisory committee members were, and the advisory committee was essentially tasked with drafting a model ordinance, and then implementing that model ordinance, and, and OER was responsible for assisting the municipalities to adopt their own ordinances. But because the legislation didn't pass, OER decided to move forward regardless, without the, the legislation, and has been continuing to meet with the stakeholder group, and drafting essentially a, a model ordinance. But in addition to a model ordinance, we have decided to also draft a guidance document to assist municipalities with answering policy questions around renewable energy.
Now, Office of Energy Resources moving ahead with draft, is it draft legislation, or is it, what are they doing with these?
So those, those meetings are essentially to bring to the public the creation of the model ordinance and the guidance documents that would become available for municipalities to assist them in drafting their own ordinances.
Now, my question is, as a stakeholders group, are you a member of it?
Yes.
Under, as the American Planning Association?
As the legislative liaison for the Rhode Island chapter.
Grow Smart is a member?
Grow Smart is a member, Audubon Society is a member. I'm going to leave somebody out. There is a, there is a list as part of that as well. OER is facilitating it with the assistance of the Division of Planning. There are numerous renewable energy developers on the stakeholder committee. The Farm Bureau is a part of the stakeholder committee.
What's the list, Ashley?
DEM is on there. Do you have the list? So it's the Office of Energy Resources, Division of Stateway Planning, Department of Environmental Management, Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, the Rhode Island Builders Association, Northeast Clean Energy Council, the Rhode Island American Planning Association, the Acadia Center, Nature Conservancy, Green Energy Development, People's Power and Light, Audubon Society of Rhode Island, Grow Smart Rhode Island, Conservation Law Foundation, Energy Development Partners, Nexamp Solar, Rhode Island Tree Council, Newport Solar, Rhode Island Farm Bureau, Handy Law, Ken Payne Distributed Generation Board, Douglas Doe, Rhode Island Forest Conservation Organization, Kira Saj Energy, Hartwood Group, and the municipal planning offices of Coventry, Cranston, Narragansett, and Richmond. Thank you.
I can ask you, just give a copy of that to win in the next couple days. Now, does Andrew Teetz have anything to do with that shareholders group?
No. It's a stake, it's a stakeholder group.
Okay, well, as you know, I requested some open records from you, and we were given that, this document last week, and we were asked to wait before we make a decision, go to this, because there's some proposed legislation coming out in November, or some kind of decision coming out in November. I am going to attend, there's one next week at Charles Town Hall on the twenty-third. But what caught my eye is when I see this, and I've got a couple emails here, one of them's fairly disturbing. And it's addressed to Ashley and Jane Weidman, and it was dated March seventh, two thousand and eighteen. It says, Ashley and Jane, since Office of Energy Resources doesn't have the expertise or statutory authority to coordinate development of any model ordinances or guidance, and Department of Planning does, would the American Planning Association consider refusing to participate in OER's current effort to develop ordinances? If APA doesn't participate, and the league supports you, Office of Energy Resources can proceed. If they do that, you won't have any credibility, and you can always comment at the end of the process. This could also be used as a bargaining chip to encourage Office of Energy Resources to revise the economic incentives to encourage development in more appropriate locations before they move forward with model ordinances. Frankly, if we all see that subsequent, that renewable energy development will be encouraged into develop disturbed locations, the pushback for renewable development diminishes. It's the development of farms and forests that is the most controversial. Food for thought, this is an exact quote from this email, "Please don't share this email with others," and it's signed Scott Malar, manager, community technical assistance from Grow Smart Rhode Island. And when this was given to me, and I had that, I have an individual, a lawyer, asking us to hold back, and I see this email, and my thought is collusion, or it's the thrower wrench in the works. And that's why I questioned that, and that's why I liked the list of the individuals on that. So, that's all I have to say.
I'm not understanding the collusion issue. Rhode Island chapter of American Planning Association is engaged and is participating.
I, I just wanted that read into the record, because like I said, we were asked to hold back, attend this, and I have members, shareholders of this group with language like that. So I just wanted that read into the record. That's, that's all I have to say on the matter.
Stakeholders, not shareholders.
I don't, I don't have any more questions.
Well, now I have a question, because after that lengthy list that you read, I, I gave you speak to the fact that there are planners from other communities that sat on that board?
Yes.
And are any of those planners from communities that have had And are any of those planners from communities that have had experiences with solar arrays?
Yes.
Because when I heard you mention at least a couple of places.
Coventry, Richmond, Cranston. Narragansett has not, they don't have any land, really.
Apparently, they're concerned enough to wonder about what may go forward. Apparently, that would be why they would be participating.
Yes. I mean, we're all participating to try to produce a good product for everyone to use.
I do remember, because I know you've told me I'm probably one of the only council members that occasionally has come to your office to ask you questions about the contract plan and the progress and other work regarding, you've told me about this group. And I recall you told me that the group, among their other conclusions, spoke to the issue of special use permits.
We did.
Did I misunderstand that?
No.
Would you, for the rest of the council indicate what you told me about what that group had to say?
Sure, so we've had multiple conversations around what a model ordinance might look like, how we would draft that model ordinance. The planning community has tried to emphasize that a model ordinance is not necessarily going to be the one-size-fits-all tool that is going to take care of this issue and assist the municipalities in figuring out how to deal with renewable energy. A model ordinance that works in Gloucester is not necessarily going to work in Warwick or Cranston, it's very different types of communities. So, we have been advocating for the development of a guidance document that basically walks a municipality through policy questions about how you would like to regulate, what you would like the end result of renewable energy in your community to look like, to draw conclusions, to be able to draft themselves an ordinance. And part of the discussion that we've had is what the process might be, or at least laying out different types of processes. And at one of our meetings, the discussion was unanimously that the Division of Planning, the Office of Energy Resources, the Department of Environmental Management, and the solar renewable energy developers that were in the room at the time were all in agreement that a special use permit was absolutely a necessary part of the process.
I hate to pick on this, but I guess that might have been a meeting when a representative from Green Development might not have been present.
They were not. They are part of the group, but they were not there.
Any further discussion from the council? So, by state law, once we close the public hearing, we have 45 calendar days to vote high up or down on the proposal before us. As long as my math still works, that comes to August 23rd is our final day to make a decision. We can either call a vote now with this structure, or we could postpone it as we do have another proposal for the same ordinance by a planning board as well, until we have that public hearing. But it would take three weeks' length to post. That does put us in the first week of August, probably not want to have it with our regular meeting, so the second week, and then we'd have to make a decision pretty quickly on which way we prefer. Any thoughts from the council, which way you guys would like to go forward?
Yeah, I have some thoughts on this, Kevin. And if you recall, our council meeting of not last month, but the month before, when I suggested we move forward to a hearing, a public hearing on solar aid, clothes, solar aid, since it's the aid revision. I made a motion that didn't carry, but Kevin, and I reviewed the minutes of that meeting that have been approved, and I know you spoke to that as well, Kevin, you suggested that we move forward in June, but then we all discussed the fact that having two hearings on that night probably wouldn't work, so we put it aside. But I want to tell you that when we get to unfinished business, item 10E tonight, I would propose that we call that to a public hearing on August 16th, that would be a special meeting. It would give the clerk the opportunity to advertise for three weeks. It's been suggested in some communications that that would give Green and anyone else who's concerned an opportunity to listen to the proposal by the planning board, which actually supports, in addition to residential units, four other utility, well, not utility, but four other solar arrays, small, medium, large, and utility. So, it makes sense to me. Initially, I hope we might vote tonight, but after what you've just said, if the council's willing to have a public hearing on solar aid, I think we might postpone the decision until after that.
What we could have is that same night of special meeting, they're all invited on the agenda.
We might, we might. So, you asked if we had thoughts, that's mine. And sorry if I talk too much, but I just can't help it.
You don't mind, you love it.
I have concerns, just like you do.
Thank you very much, Melvin. We appreciate that.
Mr. President, it's my opinion that we've heard proper testimony on this amended proposal now for several meetings. I think we know the position of the developer, we know the position of a planning board. I think it's appropriate that we vote seething. So, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amended proposal to amend the Exeter Court of Ordinances submitted by Green Development LLC, zoning, appendix A, Article 2, zoning district use regulations, section 2.4, zoning use tables, section 2.4.1.6.9, use category in revision of section 11.1, solar utility scale, solar photovoltaic facilities.
One second then.
Discussion?
Discussion, please. My question would be from Ashley, our member of the planning board. You submitted your 19-page recommendation to the council. You suggested that we not support this proposal, and I would ask, please, if you would tell me now if you've changed your mind. Because of the three hours of people speaking last month, and for any of you who didn't attend, you missed an edifying session. As Frank says, we've had a lot of testimony, there's been a lot said. And so, my question is, has the planning board reconsidered?
No, the planning board has not changed their position at this time. And for the record, the planning board did not ask Green Development to pare down their application and choose less lots. You will not find that in any record, minutes, or writing. That was not what the planning board asked. The planning board did not ask anything of them except to write their advisory opinions.
Thank you.
I'd like to amend this motion. There was concern about the tax treaty, and as Ashley stated earlier, it's not the duty of the planning board for contracts and monetary issues, that's up to this council to decide. I'd like to add to the motion as part of the application plan that the applicant submits the tax treaty at the master, as part of your development plan review, excuse me, to submit your tax treaty at master plan when you're submitting all your paperwork, so we can look at it and attorneys can look at it before this goes through the entire planning process. And part of your final approval would be execution of a tax treaty for the Exeter Town Council and the applicant.
Is that motion amendment accepted?
Accept that and second it. I'll accept that and second it, Mr. President.
Okay. Is there further discussion from the council on the motion before us? I'd like to speak to it. Personally, I'd prefer the proposal by the planning board. I think limiting to 15 parcels is unfair to the other residents that might have that same qualifications, maybe they're further, maybe they're 6.25 miles away, and because of this, the limiting language, they're not qualified. I liked also the planning board's one where it has the five distinct confined categories based on the size, whether it's building mounted, already utility scale, it kind of differentiates the rules. Building mounted, relatively simple process. It's utility scaled, it's a more in-depth process, more public involvement on that as well, because it would be obviously a larger project. And that's the one I prefer to see passed. Just because I think it's more fair to all the residents, especially the farms. If you have a smaller farm than the 27 acres, this ordinance does nothing to help you at all, nothing. So, that's why I prefer the other one, because it does help the smaller farms we do have in Exeter.
I had some phone calls about that same issue with limiting the scope of, and I had a discussion with our zoning inspector, and I had a discussion with our town solicitor this morning. And if you had another parcel like 6.25 miles away, the applicant, or someone wanted to do the same thing, it was simple as filing the amendment as this applicant did and go through the public hearings on that project. So, that was, that was one of the concerns I had. That's another way.
It's just, it's more onerous, because if you have somebody that qualifies, they don't have to submit the application, pay for the mailings, whereas some of that 6.25, they would have to go through the process like our applicant and incur that same costs. Whereas the people that may not be covered are, don't have to.
But under the previous proposal, 129 lots, there was a lot of screaming about that, so it's trying to get a happy meeting here, so.
Any further discussion in council? During that, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say neg.
No.
All ayes have it, it's a 3-2 vote. Moving on to new business, number A, personnel issues, labor negotiations. Nothing on that? B, Department of Public Works, request to bid road repair processes, asphalt paving, rubber chip seal, and rejuvenator.
I have a quick question for Steve. Steve, I got a quick question on asphalt. I was looking at, they just had to bid for a case, and I didn't have time to run it out. I don't know if you have?
I did change ours.
They took a higher bid, it was a new type of asphalt that wears longer, it wasn't much higher.
I know what you're talking about, I just, we didn't specify that, stay around, as a finalized, they're using.
Yeah, I never heard of it, I was reading the public works directors, it's not their agenda.
Right, it's a test right now.
Okay.
So, I'd rather wait another.
We'll let them try it, okay. I'm finished for now.
But I did redo our ordinance, our specs, more state language, testing, and things you mentioned.
So, it's going to ask you that.
I did, it's in there, if you did, you got a chance to read it. That's the only one?
Yeah, like I said, I saw that over the weekend.
Yeah, no, I.
I was reading the comments.
Still a bird run?
Bird run, Phila Lake, there was one, I read the comments.
Yeah, I'd prefer to wait, one more run.
No, 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 there's another type of asphalt that is doing kids.
Do I speak to us on the speed?
So, you talk about which process you would like to talk about? The paving, the rubber chip seal, or the rejuvenation process?
Well, you already described the chip seal you're going to use to bid.
Right, the rubber chip seal is similar to what the state of Rhode Island uses, except a trimmed-down version of labor. The town would provide the sweeping, the labor, the cleaning versus how the state runs their program, where the vendor does all that work, saving the taxpayers a lot of money. For instance, if I change the program on one street, I save $100,000. I still get the same wearability that the rubber chips have. It just saves the taxpayers $100,000, we can reapply that money to other projects, it's fallen behind and catch up. That's for the rubber chip, it's a proven process, it works great, it doesn't have any dust, it doesn't ravel off, as long as the road that you select is fair and decent, it'll last a long time. And the last process that I put in that list.
Rocks in people's driveways.
Right, yeah, it's none of that where we plowed off and have to clean it the next year.
I'm familiar with it.
I know, it's like you drove on it to get here, everybody did. So, the last process is a rejuvenator, okay? Basically, what this process is, in the past, you might have heard it called the fog seal, right? It's been changed in the last 10 years. Basically, this process is put on top of your chip seals and your rubber chips, and you can, you can put it on asphalt. What it does is puts the life back in the asphalt and makes it last longer. So, basically, you're going to keep your good roads good at a very reasonable cost, which is $7,000 a mile at 20 feet wide, which is about half of our roads, others over wide. So, basically, it's a process of keeping your roads that you've invested your money in, that chip seals, which are $14,000 to $15,000 a mile at 20, asphalt's $120,000 a mile, rubber chips about $80. So, basically, once you do these processes, you can extend the life of these processes, saving the taxpayers money for another five years, putting, keeping your good roads good and allowing you to spend your money where you need to on roads that are in worse condition. That's the whole three processes. Basically, a life stand of asphalt, puts that juice that you spray on the road, basically, for a term that we use, is, it puts the life back in it, but it's the same stuff that they've taken out of liquid asphalt, which is why it doesn't last as long as it used to. So, that's what you're putting back at a very reasonable cost, like $7,000 or so, approximately, based on 20 feet a mile. So, that's the three processes that are under road maintenance.
Any other questions or commentary from the council?
Steve, you did just mention earlier, you did put the requirements in there, Rhode Island DOT specs, but testing.
Yes.
That's why I'm concerned with town getting what they're paying for.
Asphalt. And we can also, if the council chooses to pay for more, just not budget it, that's the only problem.
I remember last year when I did the call, I think it was stealth in there, and they were fairly reasonable.
It's about $5,000 per project. That's the increased cost.
I'll make a motion for Department of Public Works to request to proceed to bid to allow the bid for road repair processes, asphalt paving, rubber chip seal, rejuvenator.
Any further discussion?
Just that I assume that's exactly what's in this large package.
Yes, that, under the rejuvenator, there's three separate processes, okay? There's, one is a thermal, which is basically heat, where we can correct problems, it's just part of a package. The other one is a new-style crack filler, not that we're going to use them, but it's part of the package.
Thermal would be like spots.
Yes, like around the catch basin that's settled.
Used to be called it for red paving.
Right, now they call it thermology, it's a new name, same thing. But it's just part of the process, just another tool in the package. Not that we're going to do any, we have a couple of spots we could, but I see no reason for it, it's just it's part of a package because they all work together. And then there's some other type of crack filler. I've inspected it in Connecticut and Pomfret, works very well, but it's not something that's on the board right now, but it does work with the rejuvenation process, with the liquid. It doesn't, with other crack seals, sometimes we'll have an issue. But it's not something that we're going to do at this time, it would be down the road, but it's just rejuvenating the third process in that bid package, that's why it's so large, is what we're looking at right now, to save our good roads at a very low cost.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Department of Public Works, request to proceed to bid for a utility vehicle.
One question, Steve, when I saw the communication, you traded in a truck?
Yes, that'd be the OE F-350.
Is that the one you were driving?
Yes, that's the one that has a.
So, you got to run it again?
But it runs, it just has no turbo job.
Right, okay.
And the exhaust is broken, body problems.
Turbo's still shot.
Oh, yeah, I won't invest any money.
I was going to say, if it's fixed, I'd like to give it to our EMA director.
It's not worth fixing, or I would have.
That was my only question. You're not going to keep the plow, huh?
Not that one. I'd actually put an older plow on that truck to trade it, that has been through the course.
I'll make the motion to allow the Department of Public Works to proceed to bid for a new vehicle.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Last one, request to proceed to bid on heating and cooling upgrades for the town clerk's office building. Do you want to tell us which upgrades you're looking to do?
This is the same upgrade that we did last year. Downstairs, we did two of the heads on the wall for the condenses outside, it's a real simple, inexpensive process. But they also have heat pumps included, so they can have heat and/or cooling, so it's a supplement to the existing system. a supplement to the existing system. And the next step, which we, I know we talked about in the past, but this is the next step to go upstairs in the planning department, welfare, that's going to have, up there, we're going to replace two wall units that are through the wall of the building, we'll pull them out, redo the vinyl on the outside, and then we'll put the new heads inside, and that'll finish that addition section of the town hall with the heating and cooling upgrades. Because we have a lot of trouble getting the cold up, that's why there's two extra air conditioners up there now, that we'll remove and will be more efficient with the one unit.
I got a question, these are heat also.
They will, yes.
Now, in that addition that they put on, that furnace in the basement, is that going to be disconnected?
No, no, that's still forced hot air, that's in a forced hot air system for just the house addition.
I'm not going to mention why I want it out of there in a public vehicle, so.
I, I know, I'm just, but this is supplemental too.
I was kind of hoping we'd get.
I was hoping, um, no, I don't see, Ashley probably left, because I see, she's upstairs, but downstairs, it's in Maria's office, we put it in last year, and the town sergeant's office. And it's been very excellent. It saves the heat, the furnace in the basement, basically, it works very.
He's still using the other furnace, so.
Two furnaces in the basement will still be used on oil.
Okay.
Right, this is all supplemental, and there's one more down the road for the old section of the town hall, but that needs a lot, that's different. So, this is just to finish the other side, this'll upgrade that end, that'll be done, then we can concentrate on the council chambers and the clerk's office tax assessments, that would be, it's a lot bigger.
What's the ballpark difference?
The 6,000 change for the upstairs.
We dumped into that building last year.
That was a 6,000 change for the downstairs, alright, with the new condenser, that was a total new install, there's nothing reused on this. And the out front was still a different problem, we have different problems out there.
And Steve included, and his budget numbers approved.
Yes, the funding's already been approved, yes.
I knew that, but I asked him for the record in case people wondered what you're coming up with this.
Well, basically, we wouldn't even use the same RFP we used last time, just, it is the same.
Hopefully we can get people to bid it again.
I know, we had that problem, we finally did get someone to do it, nobody wants to work anymore.
Go ahead, Cal, what's your motion?
I'm moved to proceed to bid on the heating and cooling upgrades.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I have E, the Public Works Department, awarding a bid for the random crack sealing by fiber reinforced method. Move significantly at the one bid?
One bid. This is the same process we've been using for about 10 years now, it works very well. We haven't had zero problems with this company or the product, it's on almost every asphalt town road you drive, it's been very successful. And the price is actually lower this year than it was in the previous bid by about 50 cents.
Oh, take that away.
Per gallon, so, that adds up.
Yeah. Alright, there are motion to award the bid?
Several.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. F, the Rural Land Preservation Trust, introduction, review, and possible action.
We have, we have one of the members here. Did you know, up there, what's your last name?
Bond.
Bond, okay.
Bond, Janella.
Yeah. We had, we put this on there because you had given us the checklist that you guys were starting to work over.
Yes.
I had Jim look at it, and he sent it back to me, and I sent it to you, and me, Ken Finley, we wanted to meet with you guys and go over this, when is your next meeting?
It's August 10, it is at 6:00 PM at the town hall.
At the town hall? Okay, because, yeah, that way we can, yeah, we put it on there so the council knew what we were doing, so, but I figured, you're here, I haven't met you yet, so, alright.
Any discussion on this?
Make sure you send, send me an email so I don't forget, and I can notify Ken too, so.
Sure, I have Ken's email too, so I'll see you on that.
Can you email me the word document?
Sure, do you, would you also like Jim's draft on edits?
No, I have the copy that's, I'm just going to put it in the Tom Collins format.
Okay.
And not working that way.
Okay.
Back to our Macs.
Okay, thanks.
He does a good job.
Perfect.
Just a quick question, if I could, I did spend some time and then redo it, and it looks to me as if you, well, based on your conclusion, you used a lot of reference pieces that put us together, and it looked good, but apparently the solicitor's review, did you have a few concerns moving forward? No, it's all right.
It appeared that most of the edits were some minor wordsmithing and procedural.
But I sent that back to Dan, and he and I.
I sent it to them, and we're all going to be.
That's good, I just, I, I think it's a great piece that you're putting together for people that want to donate, and obviously you just can't put your hand out and say "I'm into this." But, but my other question was eventually you'll, you're probably going to craft some kind of document that we apply to people who may want to donate, because as we know in other communities, lots of people want to donate, I'm talking about cash to a land, to a land trust in the hope that something good will come of it. So, I assume moving forward, that's another piece of the work that you plan to do.
It is, you know, we're fairly new, so the whole point of this document was to get something consistent, so assuming that the land trust membership turns over, we have a process in place to be able to evaluate whether or not we want to pursue persons.
No, it's a great piece, and I'm, it was just my curiosity about the other piece that I'm sure eventually you'll address.
Yes.
But this is good, thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Number G, rubbish removal license application for Steven Ferrode, district manager, waste management of all I.A., 1610, I.A., and Cranston, Ohio. Alright, we have an application for a rubbish removal in the town of Exeter, and it'll be everything up to date. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion that we grant the rubbish removal license to the applicant.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question of Steve, you don't, you don't see an issue with someone else picking, right?
No, they pick up commercial properties in the town.
I'm sorry?
They pick up commercial properties.
Okay, good, thanks.
Pretty much every time.
Hello?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 10, A, historic preservation and historic cemeteries, 10.
Nothing new.
Sweet, alright, Ken, impact fee study.
You might have seen the email that I sent out, put the dates for the first meeting, that meeting is attended for the department chairs.
The ones that I sent, so you'll see, see that, so you don't have to respond, you don't have to go to meetings.
No.
So, what's going to happen is that they're going to come down, and Ben Griffin, who works for the company, is going to come down, he's going to meet with department directors, so I hope I hit them all, the ones that you thought would be applicable, because I asked, I gave them a list of all our departments, and I set up the taxing and the collection, everybody else that we had on the email was fine. So, they're going to give a presentation on impact fees 101 to the entire group, and then they're going to want to spend a little bit of time with each apartment head, a moment to talk about issues that you've had with it, so it should be that one, it's a one-day event, they're coming from Maryland, Baltimore. And then what they're going to do is compare the proposal to the council, that proposal to the contract, so that's when they're going to decide, you'll decide how many sections you want to do, how much money you want to spend out of the pot, and then how high. So, it's a good plan, they do it with a lot of municipalities, so they do the work first and provide you with options.
Okay?
Two questions. See if we get it by together the same day.
Moving on to C, introduction and consideration, possible action on ordinance regulating certain secondary, I recall reducing activities, no action?
No action.
Alright, good enough. D, information technology services, probably this is your.
Mr. President, can I go back? Sorry, I'm really sorry, the last item. The legislative season is over on that one, if you wish, you could remove that one at this point, I think, and redo it again if, if, if it's happening again on the legislative that will potentially happen. So, do you, you can keep there, but.
Why don't we, we remove it if you promise us this, or that you heard something is bad to do?
I've got to figure, once they go in session, put it up there.
Well, that's, that's another problem, you know, just something.
Right, right. The only problem with that is I don't monitor the legislature, so I mean if, if.
Well, and Dan makes a good point, once a session concludes, pull it out.
Put it on, yeah, automatically.
Lynn, make a note, please.
Good idea.
To January, to February, January.
So, you're making a motion to remove it?
You can leave, if you wish, I mean, I, I was just.
Doesn't matter to me.
Leave it.
Leave it.
Okay, sorry Frank, I didn't need to interrupt.
No worries, you need to come to my office. So, Mr. President, members of the council, we've kept this item on the agenda now for a while, and last we spoke about it was in May, prior to the district financial, the financial town meeting. So, the line item that we appropriated for a consultant, and, and to bring somebody in, essentially we've already spoken to that individual, was approved, so, in light of the fact that I know that, I don't know if the town clerk wants to speak to it directly, but I think we've had a few more issues in the town hall with our services that we receive from our current provider.
Yeah, there've been some issues in the treasurer's office and the tax collector's office, and it took quite some time to straighten it out. Part of the problem was the services from the programmers, county, and local, but we got it fixed, sort of, but it took some time, you know, they were each blaming each other, so, who it really was is tough to say, but, you know, it's, it's, it's through it.
So, just to remind the council, in the past, the town council assistant, myself, councilman Morrissey, and the town clerk, met with an individual who could possibly be a benefit to the town to give us advice to move forward with upgrading what we need to bring us into where we should be. So, based on that, and based on the fact that it was approved at the financial town meeting, I would make a motion that we move forward with the, the line item that was approved, and bring the consultant in, and try to begin the process to upgrade the town hall and the town to bring us to the point where we, you know, essentially need to be at this point.
I'll second.
Because of the cost, it's 5,000, I think we appropriated for that line item?
That's correct.
Do we need to get three telephone pages, or people bring a consultant in, is that something specific, how does that work with purchasing?
5,000 and over, we do to go up to bid?
So, we would need to bid this item, even though it's a contract service, professional service, like, do we have to bid, I'm thinking they, like, are a solicitor. There's an exclusion for, believe it or not, lawyers.
Of course there is.
I didn't create it. But is there any special exclusion for, for our professional services, do we still put those, those out as well?
Okay. Can I, can I just ask a question since I seconded the motion? Is it, is it not possible to meet once with the person that did the work and pay that person for his, whatever he wants to charge us for his initial, I mean, rather than contracting initially for a whole package, because, I mean, maybe you're comfortable with what he might do, but what should we all just say? Never, well, I guess, once he presented a program, that's, we have to go on, should we see it all, can we give him oversight from the person? What are you thinking?
Well, the consultant that essentially we met with is going to give us recommendations on what to do, he's not necessarily going to implement what we need to do, but this is going to go above and beyond the report that we received before. Now, if you recall the discussion, we had put out the bid several months ago to get the report, we got a report from the person that we awarded the bid to, and the way I phrased the question was, with what the gentleman recommended from the firm that we gave us the report, you know, was this the?
Platinum package?
Was this the platinum package, the gold package, the silver package? Right, exactly. So, the other individual that we happened to bring in, we gave him an opportunity to review the report as well, and he thought that it was a lot that was in the report that wasn't necessary for a municipality of our size. So, I mean, I understand the point of going out to bid because it's, because of the amount, but I'm wondering if we could essentially just hire the individual and pay him, what did you say, Ken, under a 1099, right?
5,000 dollars, just hire him as he was presented in the budget.
Right.
I see our town treasurer shaking her head.
I mean, that's just like a budget item, that doesn't necessarily mean that he's going to charge that much.
Right, that, that's all we, we allocated it, we're not necessarily going to spend that.
Okay, I think it would be prudent for us to have maybe an executive session meeting with that individual, to see exactly what he would like to do, whether he would like to be on as a full consultant, say this is the full plan, I'll oversee the implementation of it, or him just say, I'll do it, volunteer, give you guys the pieces, the tools, and then you do it yourself, and I'm out. Or anywhere between that, I'm not scared, I'm not making a burden for us to do.
I'd go along with that, do you want me to amend my motion to do that?
Sure.
Alright, so, I'd like to amend my motion to bring the consultant in, that we have already spoken to in executive session, to discuss with him what the possibilities and his recommendations are for our technology services for the town.
I'll second that motion. Oh, sorry, Cal.
No, no, I was going to say, before I seconded it, I just wanted to ask another, why, you've seconded it.
So, any discussion, you go ahead.
Well, here's, I'm trying to picture this process, if he came in, he said, and he said to us, you know, these are the things I think that you would really consider, then, I don't, I don't know why that couldn't be done when everybody could be, we could hear it, and then if we then decide, let's do what he said, then put out a bid spec then, you know what I mean, afterwards, and let him, I, I'm trying to, no, Ken, speak to it.
I think the issue is that we want to obtain his services, so we have to talk with him on how he would like to provide us services by hourly wage or whatever, and then the rest that goes out in the public, you know, that's up to him.
But I think he also wants, I think, clarification of what our expectations of him would be and what his capabilities are, he wants to delineate that more for entering in a formal process.
I understand that, now, whether, whether or not the council wants to meet in executive session, it doesn't really matter to me whether we do it in the open or whether we do it in an executive session, because the line item has already been approved, so I think that the general public and constituents realize what the money's going to be spent.
Okay.
So, we already met with the individual once, on his own time, on a Saturday, and he gave us a considerable amount of his time, and he didn't charge us for that. So, after the meeting, we considered, well, maybe we should bring him in on a consultant basis, make the line item in the budget, and essentially, it seems that he has a level of, you know, institutional and intellectual knowledge that will greatly benefit us, so I think for the line item that we approved it for, we're going to get quite a bit of good advice for what it is that we allotted in the line item. So, like I said, I don't think we're going to spend the 5,000, and you're right, I think that, you know, we have to bring him in and exactly find out what the parameters are in which he would want to get reimbursed or compensated for his time and his. or compensated for his time and his recommendation. That's fine with me.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, and I'm not trying to be obstinate. However you think it's best to do, we should do. I just know I made a note here. I was at town hall in July, and every office was down that day. I mean, it was a started, and the collector's office, if I remember correctly, but all of a sudden, the whole building was down. It was a different job. Guessing it corrected the next day. That's not good, those are not good things for these people.
And this isn't, and this isn't a new occurrence either.
No, 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 I know.
This has been going on for a while.
That's why I'm glad we're discussing it again.
So, I mean, essentially, this item's been on the agenda now for I don't know how many months. So I think we need to really...
Okay, so go ahead.
All right. Call the whole, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries? All right. Item E, introduction, consideration, possible action, proposed amendments to the executive ordinance is Appendix A zoning, Article 11, Renewable Energy, Section 11.1 Solar. So this is the proposal from the planning board for the solar. Is there a, can we agree to action on this? Is there anyone that's up?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion I made before. I understand we just voted to amend the zoning ordinance, but I think that the planning board deserves to have what the work they've done here. And if there's great objection, if the council doesn't like it, then it doesn't go anywhere.
Question, three weeks of...
I would, okay. Here's my suggestion that we call, put this out for public hearing on Monday, August 13. That gives the court at least the three weeks required by law to give notice. Well, that's, okay.
When does Labor Day fall this year?
September.
All four. It's fairly early.
Very early.
In the event of...
Because if it's on the first Monday of September, that means we would be doing the council meeting on the Tuesday night.
There's no, start to take that one down.
It is.
Labor Day's the third, so...
We have BJ Day on the sixth.
On the sixth. Okay.
It's the 13th, isn't it? BJ Day is on August 13?
Oh, I'm sorry, 13th is BJ Day.
That's what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I'm not going to be here, so we can't do it anyway, so...
But I'm going to be going in the middle of the sixth or the 13th.
Yeah, well, that week would be too early. That's the middle. And then when it's Labor Day, it's on the third.
So we could do the 20th, one week after the regular year, or one week after BJ Day.
27.
On the 27th.
Because our council meeting will be on the fourth that month, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to draw my motion.
All right, I was going to say...
I think you seconded it. I'm going to make another one.
All right, I'll draw my second.
I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion that we call this then, because after all, it is what it is, for Monday, the 10th of September. And then we might even consider...
We follow.
Well, yeah, but we might even consider not having the council meeting that week and holding the council meeting on the 10th.
My only concern is, I know how much time we spent last week. I'd prefer to keep it separate just for time issues, because it would take up the entire meeting.
It really might not.
Right, no second.
It really might not.
So, how about, I'll make a motion that we have the public hearing on August 20th, Monday, August 20th.
Wait.
I'm about to check it right now.
Technology. When do you want this going? And it's public hearing, could drop the...
Correct.
Are you having that here?
I'm available.
Is that the third Monday?
It is the third.
The town hall will be busy that week, June and October here and that night.
Is that August?
August.
I think you said that he's, they're not meeting July and August. I think they're not meeting in July and August.
The school might be available again. I mean, they're not open yet, so... August 20th. Is there a second? Am I right?
I'll second.
We could be false more.
Yeah, but if they're not going to meet the regular council chambers, maybe situation. I don't think, my opinion is, we're probably not going to lie. If we go, then Kevin says my fault. At least, did you say at least his AC? Kevin says my fault. I won't have to take a sweat towel over it.
Yeah. All right, so August 20th, well, it's Monday, August 20th. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Transfer station.
It's going to be at the clerk's office, right?
Correct. Transfer station says, do you want to discuss?
Executive session.
Executive session. All right. Ken, item G, permit program cat breeders, RIGL Chapter 4. So this is, it gives a new ordinance.
It was presented to the council last month, and I'm going to give Steve the opportunity to update the fee schedule to 20. And then also move to public hearing. If we get a formal clause with this ordinance, I'm going to get that, Steve.
Yeah, just because there's a fee involved, we'll have to have a public hearing to change our fee schedule. We'll have to add it due to that one fee. And at the same time, we might as well throw the dog one in there, too, and just get it done with, so before they send that down to us.
Okay, you want to modify this, add dogs, or is it already in here?
No, it's in there. Steve's just going to look at it.
Yeah, I thought so.
And then go number that he wants for the dogs. You want to add the dog breeders?
Yeah.
I didn't think I saw dog breeders.
It's just a matter of time before the state throws it back at us that we have to cover that one, too.
Probably noticed I'm adding cats. So I don't want to say you're going to go to public hearing, but just hold off for a month.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you, Mr. President? Let me just get this straight from my calendar. So it's August 20th at the town hall at 7:00. Is that correct?
Item H, the regional school district finance committee. And we sent a letter to West Greenwich. Have you heard anything from them? Has anybody, the council heard from the West Greenwich Council? Nope.
I have, I have not, Mr. President. I'm being liaison to the school committee. I have not heard anything from the school committee either. If you'd like me to, I can certainly reach out to both and find out where we are.
Okay.
Okay.
Garden of roads issue, Stan?
I've heard any issue, anything on garden of roads, Steve?
The basin will go in in a few weeks. Soon as we finish that chip seal work, and that'll be, that should be it, I know.
All right, J, amendment proposal submitted by Green Development. We can take this off now as we just voted. So I'm moving to remove item J from the agenda.
Agreed.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? K, purchase of a new patrol vehicle.
Okay, K, we are taking off. Down sergeant. Part of the idea, satisfied with the point ahead of which we don't kill many vehicles. Stefan is in the process of going through a grant process, trying to get one that way. Fixed recommendations, Stefan. Motion to remove that one.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Motion to remove item K from the agenda. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. L, request for summer hours, town clerk's office building, town hall. This is the one where they are requesting their, change their hours from 7:30 to 2:30, Monday through Friday. People tomorrow day, preparing to withdraw, so 9:04 Tuesday after late. The, one union reached out and said that they had no issues, and that there were no other communications. We did talk to Steve, asking the other union of the public works, and he said it would probably operate, it wouldn't work well for his departments. We wish to do it for one, not the other, do it for either, with the thoughts from the council.
Well, I can see where Steve's coming from, where everything's settled. Wasn't in favor of... I said that Steve wasn't in favor of it because of the animal shelter transfer station public works. We had received a wire from him about summer hours. So I would just ask him what's about. Say about town hall?
I understand why the girls want to do it, but I also understand the comments about it being fair to all the employees. So it's certainly a council call, whether, as Kevin said, for one and not the other or not.
As a reminder, the other union did request summer hours during their labor negotiations, and we denied that request. So, I mean, not that they have anything to grieve on. We did approve it for the office individuals, but they probably will try.
Well, I have a question. We changed the summer hours at the town hall. When, I think it was to start early or leave early, if I remember, was that right? Open, was it to shorten the hours?
No.
Change the hours. Well, I, you know, I'd suggest during the month of August that all of the both departments take the Friday afternoon off an hour early and pay up the summer. Leave it. Town clerk, panel leaves at 3:00. Steve, when do they leave? 2:00?
3:00.
Send a moment to my Friday. No, it doesn't work that way, he doesn't speak. No, all right. He should be said, no, I was just trying.
Well, it'd be a union issue due to the hours stated in the contract.
I said send a moment, pay up, and that's okay. I mean, I'm just the agenda. So a liberal Democrat, what do you want?
Well, summer's half over as it is.
That's why I said, oh, no.
That was my comment, Frank. So...
All right. Is there a motion? All right, everyone, we'll move on to the next item. Go ahead, Frank. Sorry, I cut you off.
No, I was going to make the motion to approve the summer hours for the town hall.
Oh, go ahead. You?
I just made it.
All right, so there is a motion. Is there a second?
Do you want to date them, which they're going to commence, or is it...
I think it's the proposal before us. So if yours, go ahead.
So I would make a motion to grant summer hours to the town hall beginning July 23rd through August... Pardon me, hold on, hold on. Through August 31st.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
It's every day. Every day.
As proposed, yes. Yeah.
Very nice. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I don't, I don't want to not support these people, so I'm going to say aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed for one reason. Not disrespect for girls, who do a fantastic job, but we have public works employees that aren't going to get it, so I'm working to build up.
I do you...
I'm not going to say the word contest, so... Only for that reason.
Hold on. So redo the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say aye?
Aye.
Very true.
So it passes?
It passes.
Sounds like it passed.
Mr. President, can we revert back to discussion for a moment?
Sure.
All right, so my rationale was, is that, and I certainly understand, the DPW guys certainly work hard. They certainly deserve the summer hours just as much as the girls in the town hall. Now, as Dan said, and I said, and Dan agreed, that summer's half over. I, I think the rationale is, is that DPW can certainly get a lot accomplished when the weather's good. Whereas, I don't think there's the same level of traffic in the town hall during the summer months. I don't think as many people come in. So that's, that's the only, that's my rationale for approving it, you know, at the town hall. I certainly don't want to, I agree with Dan. You know, I don't want to get into a situation where they feel they have to file a grievance or anything else. I think the DPW works just as hard as all the other town, I mean, it's... You know? But that, that was the basis of my rationale of, you know, I think the DPW was busy during the summer because of the hours, the hours accommodate the work that they need to get done. Whereas in the town hall, I don't think there's as much traffic. I mean, obviously, the vote passed, but that's why, that's why I made the motion.
Okay.
Hopefully, it doesn't cause your problems, Steve.
It's not going to be me. It's going to be the grievance that are going to file. And it's going to file immediately. It's not just, you've got animal shelter transfer station and public works. That's not being considered. And they will file, because they already previously asked for it, and that's my concern. It's just a concern that they could cost us money in legal fees.
It didn't pass, so... Moving on to eleven reports, public works. Ray?
Public works. They started, guys started working on the salt shelter?
Yes, we finished the foundation for the salt shed. We'll be, once the asphalt bid's approved, then we'll pave the inside of the salt shed. That'll finish that process. Then we'll put the building on top of it, which is being bought through the National Joint Powers Alliance. We don't have to proceed a bid. It's already a nationally bid item, so that we can ride for free. So it saves us about $1,000 on that process. We finished all the road sweeping, finished all the basin cleaning. We're about two-thirds done with the brush cutting. As slug breakdown, we'll have that backed up hopefully by the end of the week. We'll be sweeping roads and prepping some, we repaired some catch basins and prep for chip sealing, which will be next week. When we finish that, then we'll be off onto Gardner Road for that little process. Take about a day and some other work.
It's a beaver screen.
Beaver screen? All right. Beavers plug up our culverts under the roads. So we take olds, we fabricate out of some old spreader screens, the metal grates, basically three-inch square holes or so. And we fabricate them to fit in front of the culverts to block the beavers from going, putting debris inside under the road. So that we just, every week, so we have to go out with a crane truck, and this clamp shell just pull the debris out, pull a screen and clean it and put it back. And it saves us from having to use a plunger under the road or a telephone pole or something to push the beaver dams out of the culverts. So we clean the beaver screens about once a week. We've been having to do that now about 15 years. Extra work.
And one more thing on public works. Last month, we received communication about the woman who lives at next to Mail Road, up in Woodbridge Pines condos near Brook.
Right, I went over and they complained about speed on Mail Road, among other things. What I did is I went over there, I reviewed what was in place currently. There was a speed limit sign on either side. I did upgrade one of the speed signs because it had age and loss of reflectivity. So we replaced one of the 25 mile an hour signs. We also added two blind hill ahead signs, just fair warning type of a sign. It won't do any good, but we attempted what we can do. We put up some, had some special signs made and installed those to hopefully, it's a caution blind hill. And hopefully, they'll slow down a little bit, but I haven't seen that. But what I have seen, now that you mention it, that that same person that put that complaint in has opened up and accessed through to Mail Road to allow tree crew to go in and take more trees down in the buffer zone.
I had a complaint from in the...
I just noticed this. Last week, I got it Friday.
You told me they're cutting in a, the common land.
The buffer, yeah, it's called the buffer zone on that, that side. And I know I forwarded you some paperwork that would explain some of the things about Debra and... And I know I forwarded you some paperwork that would explain some of the things about Deer Brook and, so that this, we're not supposed to be affected by this at all, ultimately, but.
We, just to, you're talking about the Supreme Court order you gave.
Yes.
Just to give the council a little bit of insight, I went to the annual, yeah, is it okay? I went to the annual Home Association meeting in Deer Brook, and they wanted the approach of the town to have the town maintain the roads in Deer Brook with plowing and I think, I think maintenance on the road. I know they talked about plowing. I had talked to Steve about it, and he, of course, I knew, I knew about the Supreme Court order, uh, but I think they're gonna pursue it. So I haven't heard anything. I haven't seen anything here, so.
That's why I asked you to, I forwarded that note about the chapter and our, speaks very clearly. Hopefully the legal can address that point.
My arm is very sweaty.
For transfer station, I was, uh, down here on the weekend and I know, I noticed people give a lot of metal. That's great. We have a full metal dumpster, fifty-yard dumpster.
Yeah, we've had, this last month, we've had to take up two of our small hooklift open-top boxes to supplement the one box that is given to us by Exeter Scrab. That's how much scrap we have. We filled two thirteen-yarders of the public works plus their forty-yarder last month. And this month, we're, I think they got it empty this, hopefully they're gonna have it empty for the weekend, or even by Wednesday, because it is full.
And you did grade it up, processed gravel. It looks good down there.
The whole area, yes.
It looks really good down there. As far as animal control, I was there Sunday. I know, uh, we have a minimum amount of dogs.
Yeah, we picked, we picked one up last night, well, actually the night before, up on Austin Farm Road. I believe we still have that one. I got a message a few minutes ago, but the owner found that one, so.
It's like a shepherd with a collar on or anything?
Yes, a smaller dog size, but yeah. I see, you guys saw the pictures online.
Figured it was something from Arcadia Hiking.
Well, yeah, that happens a lot. And we ended up keeping them for two, sometimes two weeks, till they finally figured it out. Everything else, everything's good. They're signed up for their training, um, in September for Module B. Module A is coming in April, so we'll finish it then. I talked to ASPCA, everything's okay. They approved it, and so we'll move forward with that. That's.
That's it for me. Thank you, Steve.
Can I just ask Steve a question, please, in favor of Steve? I know he's probably gonna pick up the weight, and I don't blame him. But I'm gonna ask, would you please stay, I'm not sure what's gonna be called under executive session, but I know there are a couple of items.
I'll be it.
So would you stay, please? Just, because I don't know what's going on, what's gonna be called. Thank you.
Frank, the tax collector's office, is that report?
Uh, yes, so we all got the, um, monthly collections report from Kim. I'll read it into the record. Total of collections for the month of June were nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. All monies have been reported to the treasurer, and Kim also reports that fourth quarter taxes have been collected and delinquent notices have started to be mailed. And the two thousand and eighteen tax rule has been certified with new bills that have been printed and mailed. She also says at the bottom that delinquent tax blocks are continuing to be removed on a daily basis with the BN.
Awesome.
Okay.
Continue with the Exeter Scrab school district, is that report?
So summer vacation, obviously, so there's really nothing to report with regards to the school district. And like I said before, I'll just reiterate, I haven't heard back from anybody in the school committee with regards to the, um, school district finance committee. But hopefully we'll have more to report on that in August.
Gal, tax assessor's office?
Sure, you've received Carrie's report, and, um, I'd just like to highlight that she continues to do the job well and working in concert with the collector's office. Because the role's been certified, and then the collector just got right to it, and what I hadn't got those tax bills, they are very, very on top of their game. We used to get them last minute, so thank you for that. But please note, uh, if you took a chance to read it, I hope you will, that requests has been made for reimbursement for state mandated statistical rebalance and anticipating crash reimbursement in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight. I wonder if that will still be the case, but maybe we'll discuss that another time. Anyway, uh, so, so she just goes on to tell us that amongst the other issues, we're gonna sign an abatement for ten thousand dollars, change nearly eleven, but it's a corrected bill. So just might know with the signing of it, that the bill's, that's, to get that money the way it should have been. That's it.
Let's continue on with the Exeter Job Corps?
Uh, I did, I did meet on June sixth, went with the folks there, and they, they report that they're continuing to make progress. They're upgrading, uh, the security facilities, or no, sorry, the security upgrades that they made, uh, at the facility. Uh, they graduated seventy-four, no, I'm sorry, they graduated sixty-five, uh, students. Seventy-four students last year earned their GEDs there. Uh, the welding program is expanding. They're off-site CNA training that allows them to earn certification. So they, they report that some good things are happening, but they are not, they're still trying to regain that, that status they had before. But they seem to be working through a number of new staff people. So I don't hear, but if you hear other things that we should know about, then let me know, but I, I don't know. About the things happening there that are accounted for.
Can I just ask a question? I know we brought this up a while back, and, uh.
Project Cross, I'm on it too.
Correct, and, and I know they haven't done anything, but as I drive down that way, I have people who walk, not single file, but not double file, near the white line, and, go ahead, Steve.
No, I'll let you finish it.
And I, I'm just very concerned. You can't see them until you're on them, you know, and it's just, and those people drive, I know the red light there, and it's not always, you know, it's not always red. So it's green, fly down that road, and I, they have seen it. And they work our clothing, and, and, go right ahead, so.
Are we gonna speak to this, because I don't.
I have a little information, I don't have a final information yet, but DOT just sent me a packet for restriping and all new striping on Route Two in Exeter Corridor. I haven't had a chance to review it. I just received it. Um, I'll, I'll bring it. This was, it really, it shows the map. It shows the striping, uh, from all the businesses on Route Two. So they're gonna redo in front of Deer Brook, they're gonna redo in front of Okava, they're redoing, I believe, in front of Dan's place. They're redoing everywhere in that corridor, as far up, I believe, as that light. I believe that's about the end of it, or South Road's about the end, and then it's just.
Do we move the road again?
Uh, they're changing it. Uh, turning lanes in the middle.
Don't do Mail Road this time.
But I'll, I'll bring it to you so you can review it, or you can stop and see it. It's about ten pages.
But Steve, do you think any of that restriping may, may help this problem to provide?
No.
No, it won't. Well, well, then I think what we should do is write again. Uh, there's a new director. I don't know if he was there when we expressed before, but let's reiterate that it's a safety issue. Yeah, so, so I would move that we ask the clerk to, to send the letter to Adam White, who I believe is the new director, Land. Tell him that this, this concern surfaced again at this council meeting, that there are issues with public safety of the students, I wrote it. I do think it was addressed, and I know you, you raised the question, but let's keep pounding them.
I'll second that.
So Lynn, if you need, if you need the help crafting it, or either, you know, Ray or I would help, but now you know what to say.
So under discussion, I mean, it seems that this is a perennial issue, if not monthly this comes up. I mean, they, they are young people, and I assume they're probably in their young twenties. They're crossing the street. I don't know what the school can do when they're off school grounds illegally crossing the street or doing so in an unsafe manner. Besides just tell them, wear bright clothes when you walk at night. I mean, I know we keep sending the letter, but I would see what, what the school can do.
Well, what they can do is they can maybe issue some things for the safety of the students.
But does that, would that mandate that they have to wear that when they're off school grounds? That's my concern, that it seems like if we keep doing this, we're not doing it's having any effect. Definitely shouldn't be saying, right?
Well, let me just say, and you may be right, Kevin, not anything that you're saying may, may help, but there, there is, uh, there are a number of new staff people there. And maybe even some of their after-school programs, they may address safety or security, and I think if we just keep pushing it, I mean, I can make contact too, but, uh, you're probably right. I mean, they can't really enforce, but they should at least address it with the kids, that it's a community safety issue. No harm in reporting the problem. If they can't fix it, they can, but at least we try.
I think if anything, maybe in the letter, we just ask that they acknowledge they received it, so we know it's, at least we're gonna receive.
Well, yeah, and why don't we, well, here's a thought. Why don't we ask in the letter if they might suggest some, some, you know, plan that they might put in place to instruct kids, or, you know, they have all these programs. They have a student government, they have this, this kind of post-academic or, uh, just try, let's, let's make it a little bit more specific. Make a good point, Kevin.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's all right.
Any opposed?
Minutes?
Yes. All right. Uh, Washington County Regional Planning? All right. Dan, public safety?
Quiet.
Quiet's good.
Excellent, Little Land Preservation Trust, we have that report already.
Okay. Exeter Public Library, they've opened, they started their summer programming, um, evenings, typically Wednesday nights, it's good for families, um, Barry's, the public care. I encourage you to check it out. Uh, Royal Greens Preserve, I sort of get, I mean, it was a ten-month.
Well, I, I went to the meeting last month, and listening to their town solicitor give the presentation, I guess what is going on over there, there was a civil suit filed against the town, and we're both. And if, listening to the town solicitor give his report to their council, they were, had met with a federal judge over the course of two and a half days, had come up with a compromise, but their council had to vote on it, and if they voted in favor, it was a done deal. The developer had scaled back his original commercial square footage. And against the advice of their solicitor and the town manager over there, they voted to reject it, so now it's sitting in the federal judge's hand. And I know the applicant report I've read, it sued the town for ten million dollars in damages, so it was, it's in a federal court, so I wouldn't be a taxpayer in my case. That's what I have to say.
We need to keep this on there? Do we need to remove?
You might want to keep it on, and God knows what's gonna happen over there.
Okay. Uh, Ken, your report, please.
The only thing I have other than what we talked about already, maybe would be the, uh, how the council, this wouldn't be notified or updates on the statewide permitting, because it's such a big process. And, uh, I didn't know if the council wanted to have a council member be the liaison to keep track of that project. That's pretty intense. And I think we'll probably end up using a consultant for IT services to help out. We signed the agreement. Now it's gonna be implemented. I don't know if the council would like to get more information on a regular basis on what's going on.
We've started implementing it. We have started implementing it. We're asking for information, and we've been pushing out to them. That's the status of it at the moment.
I just thought there was a good amount of money invested in that, that maybe the council could be, could be forced with the council on a regular basis, even a general item.
You mean the status of how it's proceeding, whether or not there are issues with it?
Yeah, I think it's a little more complicated than.
Are you getting the updates now, Ken?
No, probably not.
Anything to add to the agenda? All right. So I'm moving the E permitting to the agenda under unfinished business. Sorry, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that, or do we want to sign liaison or just keep it on this business?
Yeah, let's leave it there, and then maybe as Ken said, maybe if we're finished, so, I don't know, there might be something that we can, by internal.
I'm already the liaison for the IT anyways, so falls into my purview, and that's fine.
Okay. Do you want to add to your liaison report, or just, is that a volunteer?
Wait, wait till I'm actually going to write.
I agree. Thank you for that.
Any further discussion?
I'll, I'll step up when, when the need arises.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's? And Jim, your solicitor's report?
Pre-matched for executive session.
All right.
Uh, under sections A, D, G.
D. G.
Okay. Um, if you want to withdraw the bill sheet, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the bill sheet.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, tax assessors' grievance? Sorry, second?
Second.
All in favor? Or any discussion first? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then tax collectors, remittances and abatements? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other administrative issues?
I did a letter from Christine Stagg, Bob Stagg, um, about, about, um, program that she could do during the day, and I know she had asked. But I got this, sorry, I haven't got back to you now regarding communication, um, leading, communication with the guys. To a liaison for the town, uh, through the summer meals program. Unfortunately, we found a liaison and tried several past years to find one. Many of the local churches who buy assistance in, uh, province during the summer. The only solution I can think, well, the future would be to have it run in conjunction with the library, summer day programs. The program has to run during the day, provide activities as well as food. I cannot pick the job. Discuss that now. I wanted to bring that up. I know you know what's happening, so, just so that way, I don't, she had a book to her.
My thought is that she didn't find it, or she tried, but she wants to help. No, I think she tried, but that's, see that as a. Am I showing you what?
No, I, really, I just wanted to bring it up. She wrote us a letter.
We got communications. Looks like we're down to just two. Uh, first one's number thirty-eight. Dan, have you reviewed that one?
Yeah, I pulled that. Last year, we got the same request where the Exeter West Greenwich School District is requiring, or requesting that we give them some of our cap to save tax money. And my feeling is absolutely not.
Well, we did not use about three hundred and fifty tons. It went unused of our allotted cap, even after the curbside and what the town used. So it did, we did waste three hundred and fifty tons of allotted cap. Doesn't really mean anything. We didn't spend it, we didn't give it away, we didn't get paid for it. All right, so, but it's, it, it's there if you thought you wanted to do it. What if the difference in cost, I believe, is about six thousand dollars to the school district. Properly.
The way you read the letter, they're asking that we will give it to them.
Right, give it to them. And West Greenwich did last year as well.
And they did this last year, and, you know, my feeling is we already pay enough for school taxes.
Right, the, the rate's up to forty-seven dollars a ton now, municipal.
You see, now, they knew this last year when we said no, and here they are, they didn't do their homework once again.
Right, when they go over there, they've used approximately four hundred and. Right, when they go over there, they use approximately four hundred tons a year, okay? They pay because of legislation in the state did not include school departments.
So they pay a commercial rate?
They, they pay now the commercial rate, which also went up. And I don't pay attention to commercial rates, I'm not gonna, I could look it up, but I believe it's up around ninety-five dollars a ton now. Or some of that, I don't know. So that's the difference that they pay over for two, for maybe two hundred tons.
Could we, instead of giving it to them, can we give it to them at, say, like a reduced rate? So instead of them paying the commercial rate?
Well, you'd have to give it to them at the rate we pay, because we pay the bill.
Right.
If they allow you to use it, and then they would reimburse us.
But if we say our bill is forty dollars, we charge them forty-five dollars, so we're actually gonna make it a little bit extra money.
You could do anything like that you wanted, but again, it's forty-seven.
Yep.
Because the base, that's the municipal tip rate is forty-seven dollars a ton.
What do, what do they charge the other party when you sell something?
The town of Exeter does not, because that's our taxpayers that are affected.
But you have like a certain allotment that goes to the project?
Right, about five hundred and fifty tons, I believe, is it?
What does he pay?
The town rate, forty-seven dollars. They reimburse the town X number a month for the entire year on that number. So if we sell them five hundred tons, divide that by twelve, that's how much they pay us every month. Regardless what they tip, because they only, they pay, they only get the forty-seven rate for that many tons. Central Enfill knows it, you would do the same thing if you chose to with the school. It'd be two hundred divided by twelve, that's how many tons they would receive a month at the forty-seven dollar rate. So if you want to wait until the end of the year, it's based on a calendar year with the Central Enfill. I mean, I can, I can tell you what we're up to.
I would prefer to wait till the end of the calendar year, sell ourselves short.
Well, that's the whole point, and again, I believe I have the newest allotments. It changes every month, June, July are fairly heavy for us, May, June, and July, then it drops back per month. I didn't bring it, I wasn't, didn't think this was coming up, so... But yeah, like I said, we, we have, they increased our tonnage this year also by about eighteen tons. This is how the math works with the state of Rhode Island. It's affected, other towns affect our number, believe it or not, even though our, our cap went up, even though we didn't use our cap last year. So, but again, it's based on a calendar year, but I do get a monthly report, so I know exactly where we are every month. I have the numbers from, Maria sent me all the slips for the tipage every month. So we know where we stand every month, and we've been in the black for about eight years. We haven't went over our cap in about eight years.
It's almost like you expect us to do it.
I understand, I understand, it's neither here nor there for me.
It's a totally separate entity.
I, I, I would just say that if West Greenwich is fit to do that, I, I guess maybe it's an item. If you're gonna meet with them at finance, I know it's a drop on the bucket of money, but I guess that'd be a question, if you don't feel like you think it's appropriate, I guess I'd ask West Greenwich, why, why do you do that? Why don't you, we, and Steve, if you say it's wasted, I, I don't...
Well, it goes unused.
Well, unused, what, I mean, is it save them something?
I just did some quick looking up, the solid waste commercial, the solid waste is a hundred and ten per ton, whereas we're at forty-seven. So if the school reimburs us at, instead of the forty-seven rate, so there would be no change to our dollars, it's just we're giving it to them, they pay us back if we paid our bill. Say we gave to them at sixty-five, the school district would incur a benefit, and then we would incur a benefit, because now we're gonna get, we're gonna pay forty-seven out per ton, we kick in sixty-five, so we win and the school wins.
I like the finance guy comes up with this plan.
We just don't sell ourselves short, though. You won't know what you're, well, you know where you're running now, but we go by fiscal year, they go by calendar year.
Yes. Well, it's a monthly running tally, they send it to me every month, two different ways. Right now...
You're not allowed to carry over that tonnage if you don't use it?
No, you lose it at the end of the, end of the year. Right now, we're at, sitting for a twelve-month total, June to June, all right? Seventeen hundred and seventy-six tons, out of nineteen, almost two thousand tons.
So you got a lot for two thousand?
Right.
But we still got...
We're at seventeen.
But we still got August, September.
That number won't change, but our number won't change more than fifteen tons through the end of the year. We're at seventeen, we'll stay, we've stayed right around seventeen, six, between sixteen hundred and seventeen nine, seventeen ninety. We haven't went anywhere in between there in a long time.
That's the total for the year.
Right now, that's total month, total, all right? This last month was a hundred and fifty-two tons, and the month before that was one forty-one, the month before that, one sixty-five. So they, they fluctuate every month, a few tons. But the, the least on here right now is one twenty-three, and the most is one sixty-eight for the entire year. That is their spread, for your heaviest months and your lightest months, all year long. That's our average, it doesn't change a lot. When you get a change is a hurricane, or a natural disaster, floods. Everything gets wet, everything gets heavy, it comes to the transfer station, that's when we take a beating on our tipage. Because you, you can't dry it before you ship it. So that's what you have to always keep, and that's why we keep a buffer, always, specifically. So that's, that's our buffer that you're looking at.
So we could wait till closer to the end of the calendar year, and then at that point, so, because they work, say, on calendar year, we could, at that point, so the school district got a higher rate than we pay, we accrue a better cash benefit, and they get cash benefits.
They're not in school right now, with garden kind of accounting.
Right.
Right, this is all based on the school year, but it's based on a twelve-month total.
So I think, why don't we revisit this in, say, October, a little closer to the end of the calendar year?
And I can provide you copies of this for the, the whole year at that time.
But I don't want to sell ourselves short. We, September, we could have a hurricane.
Well, we need to keep up, we need to keep a buffer.
Moving on to our final communication, number forty-nine, Cal and me, you pull this one?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll let it pass, I can't. Unless it was, unless it was something of real significance.
The report has a letter from Tom McMillan regarding the handle shelter study committee report.
Thought it was. I just want to mention that Tom did submit a, a report, and, and I think at the end of his letter, he said he had no problem with the public seeing that, so I just wanted to make note of that. And I would, I would put that in the report, I see that we have a report now from the committee chair, so perhaps under, I don't know, we can put it under unfinished business, the animal shelter study committee report, because he submitted one, John has submitted one to us, so we might put it under unfinished business, because it's carried over. And then we established that that was a report.
It's a good idea. Okay.
So, so I would move that we put that under unfinished business at the next council meeting. Second.
Any discussion? I think it's a good idea, I mean, we did have a study committee, now we have the report, we have a minority report. This would be a good time for the council to review those findings and take any appropriate action that seems necessary. Neil? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to move into executive session under items A, D, and G. Are there any additional items?
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in executive session.
We didn't have that ready. Oh, I'm drenched, I can see like your collar, your shirt shows a bit of mine, but I understand.
Move it down here.